Okay, the Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the presence of allegiance. And this evening, the invocation will be given by Commissioner Shaw.
Dear Lord, bless us and protect us as we serve our fellow members of this community. Bless us with the gift of patience and humility to do good work. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner-Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, then may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the November 6th meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably moved in second to approve the minutes from the November 6th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. Also, before we go any further, we just want to make mention of the fact that it's a special day for one of our commissioners. Commissioner Turner-Sloss, I'd like to wish you happy birthday.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I really appreciate that. And thank you to the entire commission staff, as well as the city administration. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, welcome. So, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any communications or petitions?
There are none, Your Honor.
None. But you have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, Ms. Dixie, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this evening's calendar. I do have a number of highlights I'd like to make on this evening's calendar, starting with item C8, which is a contract modification for Sierra Nevada Corporation, which provides for enhanced ARF services because, in accordance with the Department of Defense, their regulations are above and beyond our FAA requirements when there are planes moving. So they have to have more support, more fire suppression support when the planes are moving. And Commissioner Joseph has informed me that he wants to vote on that item separately.
Correct.
So, other great news, this contract, or this agenda is full of really good stuff. There are five contracts as a part of the Dayton Recovery Plan that is driving $2.5 million investments into our Dayton neighborhoods. First, the service agreements, items two and three on this evening's agenda with Blade Cutters and Charles F. Jurgens are demolition services contracts. These are contract modifications. You will recall when we had to cancel one of our demolition contracts due to performance issues, these two contracts split those 22 properties that were unassigned because of that canceled contract. So each of these vendors are going to be taking on 11 more of those properties to ensure that all of our identified properties are being in a demolition plan. Item number five is a development agreement with Flats Developer. It is Phase III of an ongoing development that takes place of the former Clyburn Manor. We're very excited to have this come before you because it supports the development of 88 housing units, 63 flat-style apartments, 15 townhomes, and 10 single families. So it's a mixture of apartment, townhome, and single-family homes. It leverages, this $400,000 leverages $27 million in private investment in our South Park neighborhood. The $400,000 will help remediate unsuitable soils so that they can be built upon and remove the former cul-de-sac that still sits there, as well as add pedestrian amenities such as sidewalks and curbing. And it has a 25% minority contracting goal. So excited about this project coming to our neighborhoods. Item number six is a service agreement that is with Miami Conservancy District. It is for $1.5 million. This is to help better connect the neighborhoods adjacent to the Wolf Creek Waterway and add amenities. So it's going to reduce the steep incline related to the levee. It's going to create or bring on lighting, plaza signage, and three access points to the waterway in our Wolf, in those neighborhoods. And so, you know, this was part of the riverfront master plan.
Correct.
And we are very excited because this also leverages about $750,000 from the Miami Conservancy District, who's partnering this to make some improvements that also improve maintenance of the levee. And so excited for that investment to come this evening. Item number seven is another construction contract as part of the Dayton Recovery Plan, where we will have 197 vacant properties cleared of brush and vegetation in the Wolf Creek neighborhood. So excited to do some of that work. And then item number nine is a development agreement with the Oregon Landing Zone LLC. These are our developers from Louisville that have been working on a number of properties in the Oregon East area. And so now what they're looking at is a park amenity that will create open green space to connect many of those buildings together, the buildings being the 503, 15 McDonough, and the wheelhouse. And it will also provide some amenities for the area. Pickleball is going to be included. And it's being supported by our remote TIF. Remember, we put that together many years ago. And so this funding is being pulled from the remote TIF. And it will serve as the terminus, the western terminus for the flight line when that project comes online, right? So it's another great asset amenity into the neighborhood. So very excited about these investments, and that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, all right. So before our commissioners have opportunity to ask questions, I'd like to see, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
None on calendar, Your Honor.
None on calendar, okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Turner-Sloss, questions, comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Dixie, for the high-level overview for the number of projects on the calendar. I really appreciate the update and just want to commend the staff for the work that's being done. That's all I have, thank you.
No, some very exciting pieces on here. The levee on the Wolf Creek, does that go all the way from the great Miami all the way out to Gettysburg? Will it take the whole?
I'm not sure it goes that far. I think it's just the neighborhoods around that are adjacent to, in the Wolf Creek neighborhood and around, but I can get, I can follow up for you on that.
Yeah, no, that's exciting, that the moving forward on the river master plan will really open up this neighborhood is very exciting for that part of town.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
And I'm excited about that, too. And I do think it goes all the way up to Gettysburg, maybe not this part of the development, but no.
The plan, I think the plan called for that. This is first phase.
No, I'm talking about the general plan, not this part of it.
Oh, yeah, 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 not this particular, not this action, but the plan calls for that.
And then the goal would be then to leverage that kind of investment to what would happen further up the.
Well, and it will serve as a really important investment to some of the housing, that's new housing that's coming in Wolf Creek. And we still have some large commercial sites that we hope to have denser housing opportunities in Wolf Creek. So we're hoping that this helps, you know, boost that, too.
Well, great. Congrats to you and to the staff.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph?
I couldn't be happier with this agenda. This is great. Thank you, City Manager, for bringing these forward. There's demolition, there's clearing brush, there's interesting developments downtown in the neighborhoods. This is a great agenda, thank you.
Okay, so understand, we have one item that we're going to pull and vote on separately. So with respect to that, Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, Mayor, I move that we adopt the City Manager's agenda with the exclusion of item 68 to be voted on separately.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved in second to vote on the City Manager's recommendations minus item 68. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, now item 68, have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move that we adopt item 68 on the.
C8.
C8.
What? C8. C8 of the City Mayor's agenda.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's probably moved in second to approve item number C8 of the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And staying, okay, thank you. Okay, legislation, Ms. Blackshear?
First reading, ordinance number 32122-24, repealing ordinance number 31548-17 and replacing with the following to expand the eligible development activities for certain real estate purposes to eliminate blith and facilitate redevelopment. First reading ordinance number 32123-24, consenting to the epoxy overlay on bridge decks on Interstate Route 75-10.44, SFN 5707056, and Interstate Route 75-10.78, SFN 5707080, in the city of Dayton, and agreeing to cooperate in matters incidental thereto, including the execution of an agreement necessary to implement this ordinance. First reading ordinance number 32124-24, consenting to the painting of the bridge superstructures on various bridges in Montgomery County, including MOT-35-1607R, MOT-35-1654L, MOT-35, MOT-35-1672N, MOT-35-1690, MOT-35-1704, and MOT-35-1827, within the city of Dayton, and agreeing to cooperate in matters incidental thereto, including the execution of an agreement necessary to implement this ordinance. First reading ordinance number 32125-24, to vacate Brennan Drive from Hall Avenue to East Selina Street, and Hall Avenue from Brennan Drive to North Kilby Street. And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, all right, so we have some board appointments. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to appoint Christopher Lewis to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, all right, it's been probably moved in second to appoint Christopher Lewis to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending June 30th, 2026. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay.
Mayor, I move to appoint David Saleem to the Miami Township of Dayton Joint Economic Development District Board, representing the city of Dayton, for a term ending September 20th, 2028.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved in second to appoint David Saleem to the Miami Township of Dayton Joint Economic Development District Board, representing the city of Dayton, for a term ending September 30th, 2028. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Your Honor, eight citizens have registered, and I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on, you will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red lights come on, you will be asked to cease your comment and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Charles Wooton. Your name and address for the record.
Thank you, pardon.
Your name and address for the record.
Charles Wooton, 729 West Grand Avenue.
You may begin.
Dayton, Ohio.
Good evening.
Okay, I would like to say, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm having some problems with Downtown Dayton Partnership. I'm one of the vendors for the Christmas lighting, and I don't know what's going on, but, and I don't want to give specifics. I don't want to sit and tell you guys, they did this to me and they did that. I need somebody to deal with them, because I don't want to be on the news. I don't want to be somewhere acting crazy. I'm too old. I'm too old to even go to jail. You know, so I just want to know what's going on. I've been down there 22 years, and they moved me from the spot I had for 15 years, just to give it to somebody else that hadn't been down there at all. So I don't, I don't understand that. And I didn't know where to go. I went down to Dayton Partnerships, they didn't do anything about what was going on. And like I said, I don't think it's fair what they're doing to me. And you know, with that, I'm going to give my minutes to somebody else.
Just hang around after the meeting, okay?
Yes, sir.
Have a conversation with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to be funny. Ivy Young.
Ivy Young, 323 West Hillcrest Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You may begin.
Universal Declaration of Human Rights, adopted by the United Nations in 1948, states that everyone has the right to a standard of living adequate for the health and well-being of oneself and one's family, including food, clothing, housing, and medical care. The declaration outlines 30 rights and freedoms that belong to all of us, and that nobody can take away from us. And yet, here I am, today, asking about adequate health care. There seems to be a disconnect between you, the policymakers, and real people. According to the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine, UnitedHealthcare System, by its very design, delivers different outcomes for different populations. Over a recent two-decade span, research shows the United States has made no progress in eliminating disparities in health indicators, and this is not an accident. People are literally dying because of policy decisions from the cradle to the grave. Black Americans are suffering worse health outcomes than their white counterparts. They endure greater exposure to toxic industrial pollutions, gun violence, and other social conditions lead to higher incidence of cancer, asthma, stress, maternal and infant mortality. They die at younger ages, and COVID shorten lives even worse. Disparities in health care mean black people have less access to quality medical care, they're less likely to have health insurance, and when they seek medical attention, they are confronted with widespread incidence of discrimination. Since you are the policymakers, and you have made decisions not to hear the people, you are sending a clear message to black people that they have no right to ask for health care. In 1985, the Heckler Report, developed by Harvard University, and according to the Heckler Report, in the past two decades, there have been 1.63 million excess deaths among black Americans relative to white counterparts. That's the Heckler Report, H-E-C-K-L-E-R Report. According to John F. Kennedy in 1963, I quote, "Things ain't changed that much. There will always be dissident voices heard in the land, expressing opposition without alternatives, finding fault but never favor, perceiving gloom on every side and seeking..."
Thank you for your comments, sir.
This time is up?
Yes, sir.
But you know what I said, and this is dissident voices.
Nancy Keel.
Please, ma'am.
I'd like to give these to the commissioners and to the mayor again. Thank you. Your name and address for the record. My name is Nancy Keel, 309 Hacker Road, Dayton, 45415. Good evening.
Evening.
On November 1st, the Clergy Community Coalition handed to City Commission Clerk Blackshear the document stating that the Ballot Initiative Committee for the West Dayton Hospital Ballot Initiative had commenced collecting the 1,250 valid petition signatures. We also gave her a letter addressed to you, Mayor, and Commissioners, along with the updates to the ballot initiative vetted by Dayton City Attorney Barbara Dossick. At the August public hearing about the hospital ballot initiative, you, the city of Dayton, contracted Wolfert to create a presentation and a feasibility report that invariably misrepresented the ballot initiative. The Clergy Community Coalition never wanted to replicate Metro Health Hospital's scale and service level of 9,000 employee, multimillion dollars, multimillion square-foot hospital that grew organically, organically, with consistent support from the federal, state, county, city, and private sources over the last 200 years. This was not our argument. Our argument is that a public hospital can survive and thrive, and Metro Health is an excellent example of this. What we envisioned a hospital in West Dayton could be is outlined in the letter to you. The city spent $15,000 on the Wolfert Report, which only focused on the costs and not on the many benefits. It did not discuss the thousands of construction jobs that would result from the building of the hospital, or the thousands of permanent jobs that would be created to complete the facility. It did not mention the billions of dollars of economic impact that would be spent here in Dayton, instead of leaving the city to the hospitals that are growing in the suburbs. The Clergy Community Coalition is requesting the city provide $15,000 to generate a feasibility study that outlines how the city could make a Dayton Public Hospital work, and provide a realistic view of what could be accomplished. We believe this, a public hospital would become an economic pillar to the community, and the $2 million per year generated by the levee would act as a seeding fund that becomes a catalyst to attract additional county, state, federal, and private funding to allow Dayton to begin construction. Wolfert estimated that it would cost 38, 39 million per year to run a Dayton Public Hospital, and if Dayton is able to replicate Metro Health's funding model where less than 5% of revenue comes from public funds, this would already be sufficient. Our goal is to work with the City Dayton Commission. We're going to ask Ms. Dixie if we can meet with her so that we can make a feasibility study in time for the February public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keel.
Thank you for your comments. Bless you. Bless you.
Bishop Richard Cox, 1453 Liskum Drive.
Evening.
Dayton, Ohio. I'm here to talk to the city manager, the mayor, and all of the commissioners, for you to take a realistic look at what a public hospital would mean for this city. Not only has it worked in Cleveland, it could work here. The people who signed the ballot initiative also elected you to the offices that you're now holding. A public hospital would help the poor, who have no insurance, would help the working class, who sometimes work two jobs to make ends meet, but cannot afford adequate health care, would help the middle class, who work every day, but still not able to afford health insurance. Public hospital would bring economic stability to the community on the west side. It would generate funds, the construction of the hospital, and provide employment. Hospitals completed, it would provide permanent employment. All I'm asking you to do is elected officials, who the people who signed the ballot initiative, who elected you to your office, is to try to think this thing through. We're not here to fight with you. We're here to work with you. Public hospitals are created for the people, by the people, of the people, and then they walk with their commissioners and elected officials to make it become a reality. There's a health care desert on the west side. We have adequate data that shows that people have died because of the hospital that was a public hospital before it was taken over by a premier, that served to 35,000 residents and 70,000 people visited the emergency room, and 1,500 employees were displaced. But it was a public hospital that saved lives, that got people on disability, that made a difference in the lives of the people who need adequate health care. And all we're asking you to do is to give us $15,000, let us do a feasibility study to show you the need of a hospital, the urgency of a hospital, and the fact that it can work. We're not trying to fight you, we want you to work with us, not against us. The Clergy Community Coalition has always wanted to work with the city. And I really think that if you put it on the west side, it would give pride to the people on the west side, and it would also make the violence on the west side go down, because they would see that the city is investing in the west side. People on the west side feel like that you don't care. They feel like that you have locked them out, that you don't really concerned about their everyday problems. But I'm here to ask you to consider it, and we want the city manager to give us an opportunity to come before her and talk to her about this feasibility.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Bishop Cox.
George Tuck.
Hi, my name's George D. Tuck III. I live at 1,003 North Gettysburg Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, 45417.
Evening.
I've got two problems, actually three. Number one, I did a contract between me, Tallview Palladium, and the city of Dayton. I need to get my money. It's contract number CT233588. I'm not a big company, I'm a small guy. Every little dollar counts here. I know 40,000 sounds like peanuts to you guys, but it's 40 billion to me. I'm also looking at some funds that I need from another contract, that's CT233675, which is a wastewater treatment plant. Now, I am also excited to commend you these two service agreements for the Blade Cutters and Charles F. Jurgens. Guys have offered to use our expertise in helping them accomplish these goals with getting these demos. There's a bunch of houses, okay? That's a bunch, a house, believe me.
Yep, we know.
And, you know, being held up, and these guys trying to keep little guys like me going and what have you, something needs to be done to make it a little bit more plausible for them to be able to pay us quickly so that we can get the job done. I've got to quit, the reason why I need this other money, I got equipment that's down that I need to get fixed so that I can complete this task by your schedule. So I want to get it done like you want it done, and I'm going to try to make that a big happen. Also, I have to agree with the other two people that were up here, Mr. Ivy and Bishop, because that, from what it sounds like to me, not only would people like my company be able to help them build it, but we'll be able to help do some things to keep that thing flourishing. We need that over here, you know? And I've had to deal with some hospitals and things, and they ain't been pretty, you know? It's, Mr. Wooten got up, me and him been knowing each other... knowing each other for a long time, but Mr. Wooten would go off on somebody. But he has, he's, he's tempered down. I love him dearly, but we would wish that you would take these things into consideration and let me know if there's anything that I can do to help these people. I'm eager to try and advance my community any way that I possibly can, and I thank you. This is getting better, though. Y'all doing a better job.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tuck.
Please stay after the meeting, Mr. Tuck.
David Woods.
Name and address for the record.
David Woods at 40 Strider Drive in Dayton, Ohio.
Maybe you can.
Hello, Mayor and City Commissioner.
Evening.
I'm just going to complain again, you know, about Ketterell Hospital and the Chief of Police of Inglewood, Ohio. Now, Captain Perez and the doctors and nurses trespassed me because they said I made a threat towards the doctors and nurses, and then when I talked to the Chief of Police, Sergeant Corey Follett of the Inglewood Police, and asked him, did he tell them I made a threat towards them, because that's what they said, he said I made a threat towards them, like I trespass, he said that he never did tell them I made a threat towards them, but when I went to the mayor of Inglewood, they gonna tell me he's allowed to lie to the mayor anyway, because I said, he said that. So, I want y'all to go ahead and look at his body cam and the surveillance cameras, because he said that he never did tell them that. So, my lawyers in Texas are gonna go ahead and subpoena him and have him go to court and get the medical record, you know, far as the cameras and all that. And I'm also complaining about Channel 7 News, Channel 2 News, and Fox 45 News, because they know about this, and I told them about that male nurse who choked my dad in the throat and got him critical, that I feel that there's a serial killer in there that be putting his hands on elderly people, and they had now came down here and videotaped y'all city commission at all by that. So, I'm complaining about them on that. And also, I appointed myself as a spokesperson, since my dad's a preacher, for God, Jesus, for their rights, because he, he choked my dad, and they prayed for God, Jesus, he choked my dad after, so that's sick, right there, to do something like that. And I fight for their rights for elderly people. I fight for their rights for women that have been abused, and I fight for rights for kids. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Woods.
I said, thank you for your comments. Sorry for those challenges.
Anna Flores.
Hi, my name is Anna. I live at 9227 Great Lakes Circle.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I'm back to speak about the genocide in Palestine and the Dayton Regional Israel Trade Alliance. For those in the audience who don't know, DREDA is an economic partnership that the Dayton region has with apartheid state Israel. Although citizens have voiced their disapproval of this partnership since the beginning of the year, City Manager Shelley Dikstein here went ahead and signed a new DREDA contract in June without the knowledge of the public or even the commission. Despite what the commission tries to claim, this partnership connects us more to the Israeli military than they want to let on. Not only do we have email conversations from FOIA requests containing the sales of surplus weapons, but some of the companies DREDA has created contracts with are directly connected to the IDF. There's the UAS, aka drones program with Sinclair. I don't know about y'all, but I've, I've been watching the news and I've seen that Israel likes, what Israel likes to use drones for. Then there's Strix Drones. This is a partnership that is boasted about on the DREDA website. If you go to the Strix Drones website, all you have to do is scroll down to find that they work directly with the Israeli Air Force. The Israeli Air Force is a branch of the IDF, and that's just a couple of examples. You try to claim our weapons aren't being used for genocide, but please tell us, what are the weapons being used for instead? Excuse my language, but be fucking for real. It'd really be a shame if y'all end up facing the same fate as another person with Roland DREDA County Commissioner Deborah Lieberman who lost her seat after two decades, all because you think a partnership with a genocidal state is worth it. Today, I saw an image of a woman holding her dead child in her arms. She was crying, "I'm not a mother anymore. They all died." At the end of the day, we have a partnership with an entity that is killing the children of Palestine. I'm here to tell you, it doesn't matter where funds go or what contracts exist. We have a partnership with a genocidal state. The people do not want a partnership with a genocidal state. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Alexandra Williams.
Alexandra, 2125 East Whip Road. I'm here directly, or to respond directly to Commissioner Shaw's comments regarding his full support of DREDA, the Dayton Regional Israel Trade Alliance, and more specifically, his full support of City Manager Shelley Dikstein. It's really not lost on me that you chose to use infantilizing language, as if I don't know what I mean when I say that DREDA contributes to genocide. I wasn't around during South African apartheid, but all of you were. You know what we mean when we say the boycott, divest, sanction movement is the only thing, or is one of the most helpful things that you can do in Palestine. You know, when we say DREDA contributes to genocide, you know exactly what we mean. Your legacy will not just be relegated to claiming full support for DREDA, but also for using the one time you speak up to speak up for a woman of power. Your concerns about the attack on Shelley's integrity over, of which she has none, makes it clear who you, who your allegiance lies with. Our human rights efforts proved that there is no longer any direct line from the people to the city commission. Y'all have had people here weekly crying and begging for divestment because their own home countries that are not Palestine are now being involved in a genocide. They are now killing their family members. But Commissioners Sloss and Commissioner Fairchild, you've got these same people collecting signatures for your upcoming political plans for the simple hope that y'all will finally do something or say something publicly condemning DREDA or your city manager. It doesn't matter how sympathetic either one of you has been, because there are no principles. You are not acting in a principled way. None of you are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. That's all, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Dur...
Good recovery, Mayor.
Mr. Follett, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner, closing comments. Commissioner Charles Sloss.
Yes, I have a couple. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to just acknowledge that last week, a number of us attended the National League of Cities Conference, which was well-attended, a lot of great information, best practices were reviewed and discovered and discussed, and so my hope is that we can collaborate and execute some of those best practices here in the city of Dayton. Also, in regards to calendar item number 11, the first reading for ordinance number 32122-24 is from my understanding that Commissioner Fairchild has requested additional information to be shared with the entire commission, the entire body, so that we can get a better understanding of the, the expected use of it, of repealing the ordinance and replacing it to expand eligible uses for the REAP program, the real estate purpose to eliminate blight and facilitate redevelopment. I also like to acknowledge the attendance of the social welfare policy class from Sinclair Community College, Ms. Kiana Daniels, or Professor Kiana Daniels in their class. Thank you all for being here. Very, I would say, diverse class with a number of promising future goals to, to make sure that they're providing the number of services and programs in the Dayton community. So, I commend you all for being here, and thank you, and best of luck in your educational endeavors. A couple of other things to the food bank. Thank you very much, Ms. McLendon. The food bank is hosting their last mass food distribution of the year, which will take place tomorrow, Thursday, November the 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Dixie Twin Drive-Thru, or Drive-In, excuse me, that is located at 6201 North Dixie Drive. That is tomorrow, Thursday, the 21st of November. I encourage everyone to go out. From my understanding, they're giving away turkeys, a number of things in celebration of the upcoming holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Also, tomorrow, Thursday, there will be a resource fair soon to open at Homeful Gettysburg site, the grocery store, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that is located at 807, 807 South Gettysburg Avenue, and the program will bring together a number of various community agencies, provide food assistance, health care, employment services, education services, and more. So, that is tomorrow, Thursday. I'd like to thank all of the residents who came out this evening to raise and address the commission. Mr. Wooten, thank you. I'm glad that you're still here. Hopefully, we can assist you in addressing your concerns. I would just encourage you to continue to have that conversation with DDP, the Dayton Downtown Partnership. There may be rationales as to why your location was moved from 15 years, but again, I can't make that assumption, so whatever assistance that we can provide to help you have that conversation so that we can get a better understanding collectively as to why your site, your vendor site was moved. Mr. Ivy, Ms. Nancy Keel, and Bishop Cox, thank you for your continued advocacy and for raising the concerns in regards to the disparities around health care, especially for black and brown communities. I appreciate your leadership, and thank you all for being here and your continued work, and thank you for circulating the petition and doing the additional work that's needed. I also would encourage you to, to, I'm glad that you are requesting to have that meeting with the city manager so you can get an understanding of what the grants process is, and to be able to channel through those various different, to work through that process itself in regards to your request for the 15,000 for the, the assessment. Mr. Tuck, thank you for being here. It is my understanding, again, that you mentioned the two contracts, or three contracts that you have yet to be compensated for, so it's my hope, as you work with the commission as well as Mr. Hall, that that too will be resolved sooner than later. So, hopefully, we'll have an update to you here soon. And certainly, last but not least, Mr. Woods, my condolences. I'm glad to see, or glad to know that you're continuing to seek your counsel with your support, and again, my condolences to you and your family. Ms. Flores and Ms. Williams, thank you, ladies, for being here and your continued advocacy. I will say this, I don't think you fully understand the process and the role that all of us have as elected members, and I know that I've had this conversation with you both individually, and so what I would say is that you should know that each of us only pose one vote. So, I've shared that with you on a number of occasions, and so if you want anything to change, I have, again, given you a number of recommendations on how you make that change. I continue, I would encourage you to continue with your advocacy, but know that it doesn't start and stop with just the Dayton City Commission. So, again, whatever support that I can provide, I'm more than willing to do so, but I just want you to make sure that you fact-track and you really understand how this process and how this legislative body works, and know that it takes three for anything to move in the commission. And so, I would ask that you continue on your, your path for your advocacy, because your concerns are valid, and I just want you to know that I am not in no shape, no form, complicit by no means, and I hear your concerns and I support your concerns. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. So, you took one of Commissioner Fairchild's requests. So, did he get a chance to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll follow on that, but...
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner, for lifting that up and making sure the public knew that we were getting a little bit more information on that ordinance. I just want to recognize Rap Hankins here with Drive Electric Dayton. Rap and his wife are here representing that organization. They were at the National League of Cities, representing the, what steps it takes to get to electric vehicle, and they were also out at the Second Street Market on Sunday, where my wife and I went to check out some of the electric vehicle cars, because we're in the market for one, and who knows what's gonna happen with the tax credits, but if you are thinking about getting an electric vehicle, I would encourage you to do so by the end of this year, because the, the credits are $7,500, and there's no guarantee those credits will be here next year. So, if you're thinking about electric vehicle, now's the time to buy.
Commissioner Shaw.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, for recognizing Rap Hankins. I was gonna do the same thing. He did a great job at National League of Cities of talking about the great strides that Dayton is making in the sustainability space, and should give a shout-out to Commissioner Joseph for his great work in that regard. To this conversation about DREDA, because my friends are here, I will say again that there's a lot, been a lot of misinformation put out there that City Manager, we voted to approve that she makes the decision on items $50,000 or less, expenditures $50,000 or less, but it is aligned with the City Commission's priorities and budget, and we are supportive of that, and it is, in fact, a best practice. To date, again, the city manager has not received any change in policy from this body, and I haven't heard any of my colleagues speak to the contrary on that, at least not to me. DREDA leverages about $50 million in economic development for this reason, a variety of products and services that we exchange. You've had that drink of water at the water fountain out there, that's a DREDA project. In fact, it was the first kind of ribbon-cutting that I did as an elected here. So, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I do not believe that it is in any way supportive of genocide in Gaza. It's about IT and health care and education, and it's important to have connectivity with organizations like that so that you can have an exchange and a conversation, and I support it. No apologies there. With regard to the CCC, I'm glad you're here, because I think we all agree that we need better health outcomes in West Dayton. That's a fact. There are ways to do that, and there are ways that do not necessarily effectuate good change in that, in that space, and I just don't believe that building a big-box hospital on that site or any site is, is effective. We had Good Samaritan Hospital there, and we had bad outcomes, bad health outcomes in West Dayton. So, there's no evidence that a hospital in that regard would change anything. I think that, I know that, we're moving toward a better primary care system, prioritizing preventative care, and I think that if we all work together, we can expand that and leverage it to achieve better health outcomes. So, that's all I have today. No, I don't. I do want to recognize that Small Business Saturday is just around the corner on November 30th, offering a great opportunity to celebrate and support the incredible small businesses that serve as a backbone of Dayton's economy here. So, I encourage everyone to support these small businesses, especially during the holiday season. And as always, I would give a shout-out to AFL-CIO and the Building Trades Apprenticeship Program. Come down and take advantage of that. We have applications at the city commission office, and it can be really life-changing for you, for your family, and for our community. So, thank you very much. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Commissioner Joseph.
Commissioner, if I could just pile on, the apprenticeship program that Commissioner's talking about is free. It gives you free experience, free certifications. Not only is it free, but they actually pay you while you're in this program. It gives you exposure to all kinds of different trades, and it's coming up. We run them, it's actually more than one last year, I think.
Yeah.
So, stop by the commission office, get an application. There are great jobs out there, paying very well, and there's plenty of work. We have all kinds of construction going on.
Deadline January 17th, I should have said.
There you go. Thank you very much, Commissioner. I want to make sure that folks know. So, please apply if you're looking for a job. So, thank you for your comments, Commissioner, all the way through. Excellent. And I do have one thing to add, and that is, in this coming year, we have a bunch of sustainable energy programs coming to your neighborhoods. A lot of our residents are gonna be eligible for them. The first is Dayton Home Repair Network. These are grant-funded. This, this home repair network is gonna put forward $8 million in investment for income-qualified residents to fund weatherization and energy efficiency improvements. That's the first one. The second one is energy upgrade rebates are, if you're eligible for them, they're coming from the Ohio Department of Development, and that is if you want to upgrade to a more efficient heater or water heater or a few other things. You can see on the Ohio Department of Development website, there are rebates available. Third, there's a huge initiative you're gonna be hearing more about called Solar for All, and that is a $9 million grant-funded initiative that's gonna install, install solar panels for right around 1,000 low-income residences here in Dayton. And the, the first criteria for being able to qualify for that is that you're a member of the Dayton Home Repair Network, the first initiative that we talked about that's funding repairs, weatherization, energy efficiency improvements. So, those things are coming in 2025. You'll be hearing more about them from us. I would just say, in other areas of the country where they've put forward programs like these, there have been people trying to take advantage of it, unscrupulous people going door-to-door and saying, "You've heard about the Solar for All program. Here you go. Sign on the dotted line here. Don't sign on the dotted line. Wait for us to give you the go-ahead and give you the information straight from the commission's mouth, from our Sustainability Sustainability Office mouth. If you have any questions, contact our Sustainability Office here at the city, and we'll make sure that it's the right program, that you're qualified, and people aren't trying to take advantage of you." We want to make sure we do this right, and this benefits a ton of people here, so I really wanted to make sure to give you all a heads-up. You're gonna be hearing more about these... You're going to be hearing more about these three in the new year, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Misses have said a lot, a lot of good stuff. Thank you all. The, one thing I wanted to add is the fact that we have been consistently working over the last, I know, three, three years, probably in particular, to align ourselves more with our schools, more with the colleges, and more with the apprenticeship programs, and more with those who are producing more and more of the jobs for our young people. There are some states, as we talked to when we were in the National League of Cities Conference this past week, they're doing some guaranteed programs for young people once they reach middle school, and this work is being done to enhance and increase the opportunities for more and more young people to find their talent, to find their gifts, and then to find ways to enhance those, and then make their strong positive contribution to society. So whether they go to college, or the military, or they go into the workforce, and that's why we do what we do as far as this space is concerned. Research also shows that that work also helps to improve and increase the median income in respective cities, and increased median income also increases the quality of life and all those opportunities that go around with it, jobs, health care, education, et cetera. Because, as was mentioned, Mr. Ivy, and I really appreciate your comments as well, that there are a lot of things that we are technically guaranteed. There are a lot of individuals that are level much higher than ours, who are doing everything they can to make sure those quality of life opportunities go to certain segments of society. And while we continue to do the best we can as far as raising those options for the city of Dayton, you know, the, the effort will not stop. And so while we can do everything we can on this end, we appreciate your work that you're doing on your end. So, thank you. So with no further business, come forward to the commission, love and peace for all, hate for none, this being is adjourned.